Our meeting begins tonight. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Poole, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God our Father, as we gather for this meeting, give us guidance and wisdom to make proper decisions. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd is absent. Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Present.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Someone care to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Lloyd?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. No objection. Motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of September 9, 2019. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the September 9 meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. No objection. The motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Return to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of our regular business items, agenda items, please step to the microphone. As you know, share with us your name, address, and your thoughts or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. The comments I have this evening are based on the Agenda Item Number Two, which is Lyons Park Shoreline, $74,800 to Mark Haynes Construction for additional armor stone placement along 300 feet of Lyons Park Shoreline. According to the internal documents, when finished, only 120 or 120 feet of shoreline access will remain. Just a little bit of history on that. In 2009, some of the commissioners onboard today were here for the 2009 public meetings for the Lyons Park Master Plan, and I have a copy of page 11 from that plan, which is here in my hand. And basically, this page 11 delves into the shoreline restoration from 2009. There are eight bullet points attached to this page, on page 11, and six of those bullet points have come to fruition. There's two that have not. And one of the bullet points is a new picnic pavilion and restrooms were scheduled to be placed somewhere close to the shoreline. That didn't happen. But more importantly, improvements of the existing break wall for pedestrian access was at the top, actually in the middle of this list. But I remember going to those meetings, and it was very, very top of the list for the public that were at those meetings, that that break wall should be reconstructed for fishing access and walking access. In 2010, the shoreline was sloped. We paid good money for that. And a month later, the sloping of the shoreline began to erode immediately. And this has been a topic of discussion for the last 10 years. And really, the city had not, well, actually, they didn't do anything until last year. And now we're basically back to the same shoreline we had 10 years ago, only with prettier rock, prettier riprap armor stone. And I'm just curious whether or not what we see now and what we'll see after this is what we're going to get. Is that as good as it's going to get? Or are there still plans maybe to rebuild that break wall in the future? Thank you.
The Richard Fager. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission on any of our regular business items? If not, then we have a public hearing on a proposed rezoning at 2309 Columbus Avenue. Ms. Byington, I understand that you will be presenting on behalf of the planning department.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission and the audience. The application was made by Dan McGookie on behalf of Ted and Debra Peters. They are requesting to rezone 2309 Columbus Avenue from R-140 Single Family Residential to RRB Residential Business. The surrounding properties are zoned residential, but in close proximity, there are parcel zoned automobile parking, local business, and general business. And the property is located two blocks from Perkins Avenue. The property was formerly used for Dr. Fidler's podiatry practice, but has been vacant for numerous years. In September of 2016, Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for a contractor's office and inside storage. In November of 2016, the Planning Commission denied a proposed amendment to that conditional use permit to add a driveway and parking in the front of the structure. The use never came to fruition. In May of 2019, the Planning Commission denied a request, or the Board of Zoning Appeals denied a requested use variance to permit transient rental. Throughout the past few years, this property has had inquiries regarding non-residential uses. The currently requested zoning classification of residential business will allow by right single and multifamily residential, home offices and occupations, apartment hotels, and rooming houses. By way of Planning Commission approving a conditional use permit, the uses of neighborhood retail stores and services would be permitted. The bicentennial vision speaks to reclaiming and repurposing blighted properties. This property, although not visually blighted, has sat vacant for numerous years, and further vacancy will continue to deteriorate the structure. The applicant has stated that the construction of the building is not suited for single-family residential use due to the structure being cut up for patient rooms, as well as the low slope of the roof. Approval of this rezoning will provide both continued residential use options, as well as low-impact retail and service opportunities with Planning Commission approval. Planning Commission provides their recommendation of approval, as does staff, due to the property's close proximity to commercial uses, the unique floor plans and construction of the building, which has been a hindrance to single-family residential occupancy. And going through the poke directories, I was not able to find that this property was utilized as a residence in the past. I looked in the 1923-24 poke directory. There was nothing. In 1955, it was American Publishing, or something similar to that for a business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byington. Commissioners, questions or comments for Ms. Byington?
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
Ms. Byington, I think I understood you correctly when you said that the Planning Commission at some point denied the permit application for transient rental on this property?
Through you, Mr. President. I misspoke. It was the Board of Zoning Appeals that denied the use variance for transient rental.
And now, this zoning change would actually fly in the face of the BZA's denial, because this zoning change then again would allow transient rental on this property.
So the application that went to the Board of Zoning Appeals was strictly for transient rental use. This request is for a rezoning, which allows more than transient rental, but you are correct, would allow transient rental if the owner chooses to move forward with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Poole.
At the Planning Commission, you were there. Neighbors came and spoke. What was the character of that? And talk about that for a second.
So through you, Mr. President. I'm assuming you're speaking of this very last Planning Commission meeting?
Yes, the last one, yeah.
Yes. The neighbors were in favor of this application. Although we're not supposed to consider what the proposed use is, we are supposed to look at for rezonings what all of the uses can be. The applicant did state at the meeting that he would like to use it more or less for transient rental use. He stated that, and the applicant will probably speak more to this, but primarily for his family and friends that come in to visit. His neighbors agreed with the idea, and they said they would also like to use the property for the same use, for their friends and family as well. So there was nobody I can recall, and I can double-check the minutes, but I don't recall anybody that was opposed to it at the Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, just a question for the Law Director. She indicated that the Planning Commission does not take in consideration use. Does that apply to Commission also, in terms of approval?
Yes, I would assume you guys could take into consideration any facts that the Planning Commission would as well.
Okay. Let me suggest, then, that this building sits way back from the road, and as has been stated, it does not have any, it's not, the use of it that's being proposed is probably appropriate. I understand the folks that the neighbors are in favor of it, which they were not in favor of what was being proposed the last time, when the Planning Commission turned it down. It is understandable that the zoning commission said no, because the zoning need to be changed. So we're doing what's necessary to make this possible, I think, for the, I'm going to support this, because I think the neighborhood is better off with something low-impact like this, that's getting the building utilized, getting it taken care of, as opposed to waiting for it to deteriorate. Especially since the neighbors are very much in favor of it. They recognize what they're getting. At some point in time, if the owners changed, correct me if I'm wrong, but Planning Commission would have to approve anything that's changed in terms of use, correct?
Through you, Mr. President. If they wanted to...
Turn it into a superstore.
Need to have a rezoning.
There you go. That's what I want to say. So I think the process can work, and the neighborhood is protected, and they're getting something that's going to be an improvement. So I'm going to support this.
Mr. Lockhart.
Do you have any idea, or could you restate how long the property was either not in use, and the condition of the property itself?
Through you, Mr. President. I don't know for sure. I was told probably close to a decade. I'm not sure if that's accurate. As for the condition of the property, I believe there were some pictures that may have been shown at Planning Commission, but I don't have any sort of a structural analysis or code violation list or citations, anything like that, for the property.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Ms. Twine.
You mentioned that no one opposed the rezoning. Are you aware that all the neighbors were contacted, or just those in the immediate surroundings of that property were contacted?
So through you, Mr. President. For a Planning Commission public hearing, we notify all properties within 300 feet from the property line of this parcel, and there also would have been a notice in the paper.
So I might have missed something before. Mr. Poole made an important point. If that is correct, that the neighbors opposed the change before the BZA, but then not before the Planning Commission, that's an interesting point. Is that, in fact, the record?
Through you, Mr. President. Yes, that is the record.
Okay. I didn't see any other way that the Planning Commission reconciled or even acknowledged the decision by the BZA, but that perhaps was not reflected in the minutes as I read them. Can you speak to that at all?
Through you, Mr. President. I don't recall that they acknowledged it directly. I believe it was probably in the staff report, that the history of the property had gone through certain applications in the past, but I don't recall them specifically talking about the Board of Zoning Appeals process and their decision.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, anything further? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present wishing to speak to the proposed rezoning?
Members of the Commission, I'm Dan McGookie. I represent Ted and Debra Peters, the applicants for the rezoning. To clarify a few points, the Board of Zoning Appeals, even though it did deny it, the vote was two to two, and I'm trying to, Mr. Matthews had to recuse himself, because he is the insurance agent for Mr. Peters. So, but they had strongly suggested that we go down this path, and here we are today. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve this application. There was a list, I was looking in my file quickly, it was five or seven neighbors who had signed a petition that Ted had circulated. They're all in favor of this. One gentleman, in fact, who'd been there for two doors away, I believe, Ted, and Ted can speak to this better, and identify the person. He was actually thrilled, because he's got families and children and grandchildren that he thought that he could house people right there, close by, and visitors. And so the other thing I'd like to make mention of here, too, is that, to my knowledge, I did a little research on this, and I always knew it was Dr. Fidler's office, who was a podiatrist. And anybody that was ever in this building, you could, once you walk in, you can readily see there's no possible other use, as far as a residence goes. It's a very narrow lot. I think it's only 40 feet wide, and each side of the building is only a few feet off of the lot line. So you can't knock the building down and build a new residence. There's just not, it's just not wide enough. And the other thing is, even within the existing footprint, given the layout and the structure, and someone, Angie had mentioned the slope of the roof, it's high in the front, and for whatever reason, when they built this building, it slopes drastically down. So it is not, from an economic standpoint, feasible to convert this into a residence. Interestingly, though, too, a point of Sandusky history, this building, I understand, was built as a fishery in 1939. So to my knowledge, this building has always been, and I'm not aware of any other use in between the fishery and Dr. Fidler's office, but this building has always been commercial. That's the only potential practical use of it. And I think Ted can fill in a few details, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peters.
We bought the house next door, 2315. It was built by the Lay's, Lay Fishery. And I was told back in the day that the Lay's had a fish hatchery in there. And that was the reason they built that in 1939. My house was built in '36. You can tell they were pretty much adjoining properties. It's one reason I wanted to get my hands on it. The fence line, it's got a gate, they all connect. It's just a perfect plan for what we want to do. I have family that lives in Florida. I want to have a place to house them when they come home. That was the original idea behind this. And then I've talked to other people, friends, family, and, you know, there's kind of a market for that type of thing. You know, I don't want to get into the rental game. I was asked, why don't you just rent the property out? That's not what I want to do. I don't want that in my neighborhood. If I would have some sort of problem next door, I would be glad to call the chief and say, you know, these people got to go. I don't want it in my neighborhood. Be very selective if somebody I didn't know did run it, because, you know, it's a nice area, and I intend to keep it that way. I didn't want it to get into the wrong hands. I didn't want somebody to come up with a wrong idea, a wrong plan. And that was the whole basis of why I bought the property. I wanted to protect my own and my neighbors. And that's the whole thing in a nutshell, trying to come up with another use for it, repurpose the building. Any other questions?
Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? No, thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Brady, I'm sorry.
Mr. Peters, Ted, your intentions are honorable, and I know you're an honorable person. I'm going to ask you a question that I don't think you can answer, but that is, how long are you going to own it? Because when you stop owning it, there's going to be someone else there that may not have the character or the philosophy and drive that you have to only rent it to good people, so to speak.
Well, you know, and then, you know, that goes along, too, with just buying it and turning it, being it was residential, just turning it into a rental property. You know, I probably could have got two apartments out of it, and I was worried about maybe some landlord come in and do it in my neighborhood. So that was my whole intention of grabbing it when I did. I didn't want to take the unknown going into there. I think that's kind of anybody's neighborhood, really. When, you know, you would sell your house, you have no idea what that person is going to do to it. You know, it's definitely a business property. I mean, it's up to you guys to deny or approve what you think should go in there. But, I mean, it does have plenty of off-street parking. That was a problem, I think, is why it was turned down before. The construction people wanted to put a drive or a parking spot or something in the front. And the actual people that were against it were the people we bought our home from. I do know that, because I talked extensively with those people about that. They didn't want it. And quite honestly, maybe if it was me living next door and I didn't own that, maybe I wouldn't want it either. But we have four parking spots in the back. I have an easement for probably about six cars that Dr. Fidler secured with that property. So there's plenty of off-street parking off that alley. There won't ever be a car parked in the street. Before, the alley's parked as patients out front. Anybody that ever went there parked in the street and walked back. So there's, really, from the street, a lot of people don't know the building exists. So I think it's really, really low-impact.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lockhart.
How much do you intend to invest in the property, or how much have you all, the grand total?
I'm looking at probably $45,000 to $50,000, what I need to do. You know, got to read, you know, there's a lot of things that need to be done. It's 1960-70 style inside. It's pretty well gutted inside now. I start taking things out, and kind of got things laid out how they, how I think they're going to look. But I pretty much shut the project down because of the unknown. I didn't want to stick money into it.
So $45,000, $50,000 on top of the purchase price. That's pretty significant.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
You may not have an answer for this one. What will you do if this isn't approved?
Well, the first thing I'll do is devalue the property. The taxes will go out. I'm not going to pay, I'm paying commercial taxes on that property right now. And I haven't changed. I haven't done anything, because I'm with the hope that I can do what I want to do with it. You know, I don't think you guys would want to see it turned into a big warehouse with construction equipment, and a lot of banging, and maybe guys in their saw and, I mean, it's a residential neighborhood. I'm trying to keep it as residential as possible. You know, with sports courts coming in, and you've got all the, you've got the winter activities, you've got a...
Integrity. And if Ted says that he wants to keep it a neighborhood, you know, he's not going to have a frat house. He's going to have what he says. You can take him at his word. The other thing I would say is, it's no different, I think, than maybe people buying a summer home here, or maybe a condo in Sandusky, and renting it out to God only knows who. And are they, would someone who owns a condo renting it out, they be paying the rental agreement that I have to pay, because I have a home that I purchased for my grandson to live in and rent from me, so he could own a house someday? I think you've got a good thing going here, and I think you've got a good person wanting to do something good. Otherwise, do you think his neighbors would say, hey, if Ted says he's going to do that, he's going to do it, regardless of what's down the road? How can we know what's down the road? So I'd say give him a chance. He deserves it.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Anyone else present wishing to address the proposed rezoning? Well, I was originally opposed to the rezoning, but after hearing presentations tonight, I'm convinced that it's the right direction, and I'm going to support it later on. If there isn't anything further, Commissioners, I declare this hearing closed. Commissioners, we have a number of communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those?
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. No objection. The motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioners, we have three items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like to have any of those items moved to the regular agenda? Mrs. Cresser, would you then present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is a lease agreement with serving our seniors for vehicles for the Sandusky Transit System. Item B is a contract with serving our seniors for transportation services with the Sandusky Transit System. And item C is the request for a liquor permit transfer, D1, D2, D3, and D3A, for Doghouse Bar LLC, doing business as Doghouse 1002 West Jefferson Street.
Commissioners, having heard the consent agenda, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Move to accept the consent agenda, declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions, as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda, should take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the Commissioners on the consent agenda motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and transfer, please.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Those two ordinances and that motion are approved. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, item number one is under Section 13. It is an ordinance amending the official zone map of the City of Sandusky to rezone parcel number 57-01486.000, located at 2309 Columbus Avenue, from R-140 Single Family Residential District to Residential Business District, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension, releasing full accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. I should say further discussion. If there isn't anything else to be added, Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number two, please.
Item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Mark Haynes Construction of Norwalk, Ohio, for the Lyons Park Shoreline Revetment Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, other than answering the questions about, that were brought up, just like to know where we are on the two of the eight points that were brought up, or where we're going with them, if we're going to do them at all or not. In terms of the improvements...
In specific...
There were eight points. You had six. Yeah. One was the pavilion, and I forgot what the second one was.
Shoreline.
Shoreline. Just where we are, what we plan to do about it, long-term.
Mr. Klein, are you able to address those points?
Partially. Through you, Mr. President. I would actually like to backtrack a little bit and just go through the improvements that we've done, because I have about 12 listed from the master plan. And they are the splash pad, the playground, the restrooms, the basketball courts, the bike and pedestrian path, parking lot with the turnaround, a natural area, realigning Winnebago. And then I do have three on here, the memorial statue, the break wall, and the event lawn. Right now, we do not have those last three in the capital plan, but I would say that, I mean, we go over this every year. We've spent a lot of money on the last nine years on Lyons Park. And I would never say that we are done with Lyons Park. I would never say we're ever done with doing improvements to any park anywhere in the city. What I would say is that what we're doing is part of this project, as we're reestablishing that shoreline, making sure that over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years, we don't lose more shoreline and lose infrastructure out there. And then when we proceed with other parks and other properties, maybe we reanalyze and look at the timing of when we implement a break wall, and the other things that are still remaining within that master plan. And I would turn it over to either the city manager, or planning director, or even Jason Whirling. We all meet every year to go through our park master plan and figure out where the money should be best allocated and associated that year. So as far as the break wall, I guess, you know, we're looking at reestablishing that shoreline now through the temporary permit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Is there anything more to be added to that, Mr. Webster, Mr. Poole?
No. Other than to say that I concur about taking care of the, what you're doing now, first, the shoreline first, that's good, because that's most important for the long-term use of the park. The other two things, the amenities to put inside the park, a new pavilion or shelter or whatever, that's something that I recognize with all the things we have to spend money on in the city, is not going to be real high on our agenda next year, for say, or perhaps the year after. I would suggest that as the use of the park grows, we will know when it's time to spend money there. I'm a big believer in providing services that citizens think they need, and they show that by their first asking for it in large numbers, and also when that park gets crowded and is used a lot, it'll tell us it's time to divert some money from project someplace else over to this. So, but just... that by their first asking for it in large numbers, and also when that park gets crowded and is used a lot, it'll tell us it's time to divert some money from project someplace else over to this, so. But just long as it's, I'm concerned it's not on your plan at all. I have some thoughts about that, but just to reiterate, as long as we recognize that it needs to be done eventually and on demand of the public to use. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments, commissioners? Mrs. Kresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please, Mrs. Kresser.
Item number three is a resolution authorizing the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2020 Ohio Transit Partnership Program Grant Funds for the Sandusky Transit System, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension, releasing full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
An emotion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
I welcome any types of improvements with our transit system from Mr. Freitas. She's doing an excellent job. My question would be inclusive of this. Where are we with the running times and benches? And in particular, when I say running times, is there consideration to run later or on Sundays so that becomes a more reliable source for people who are going to work? Or, you know, church or other activities that they need to go outside of the hours that we're running right now? And of course, benches, benches, benches.
So prior to this application, we applied for the 5311 and the 5339 funds from ODOT. We still have not received word if we are awarded that yet, but as part of the 5339 grant, I did write in there for 20 additional benches to be able to place throughout the city. And Tom Horstman, the planner in our office, and myself sat down, and we did kind of an inventory of ridership and need for the benches, so we have that. So once we know what we've been awarded for the benches, then we'll be able to go through and prioritize where to put those in at. So that's, I think around October 7th, we'll know on this grant and those grants as well. And it's all kind of a shell game, and once we get all of our, all the awards in because of the additional gas tax that was passed by the state, there's additional money. So we're just trying to see what comes through, and then we can make the decisions where the biggest need is.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas. Can I ask you questions, Krista?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you also asked, yeah, about the times. That was the other thing that was written in the 5311 grant, was to increase frequencies on the blue, red, and the yellow routes. So again, just kind of waiting to see what we're awarded with that. You know, there's so much need out there and stuff, so if we can at least increase the frequencies and kind of look and see, maybe we can add, you know, additional lines on that Sunday. But, you know, we have added blue in on Sunday, we've added yellow in on Sunday, so we're at least slowly adding things in there, and hopefully we can increase the frequency and get more lines on Sunday as well.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Would you take a moment to speak to the Wi-Fi and electronic things that are, that are improvements so people know what we're doing? That's, that's very interesting and big time.
Yeah, so as part of this grant application, we're asking for four different things. One of them is Wi-Fi on the buses, so you probably all will remember when we went and went live on Google Maps, so people can go on Google, see the bus routes and connect everything. The one thing that we cannot do on there is show live, like real-time feeds where the buses are. So a lot of times buses will get held up and see their point traffic and different things, and people are calling dispatch, where's the bus? And so if we can get the Wi-Fi on the buses, then we can send those live feeds. People can go on and see exactly where the buses are in real time. So that's what we're hoping to do. And then if enough money is awarded, we'd like to provide Wi-Fi on the buses for the passengers to use while they're riding on the bus.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. You have, Mr. Freitas, you have spent our money wisely for quite a while here and truly improved this, the transit system, and I think long-term, it's really going to, it pays benefits. You have to move people around to get them to work, and everybody doesn't have a car, and this is one thing that's very, you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else, commissioners? Mrs. Kresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number four, please.
Item number four is an ordinance declaring a 2004 Chevrolet Impala as unnecessary and unfit for city use pursuant to Section 25 of the City Charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a 2020 Chevy Traverse from National Auto Fleet Group of Watsonville, California for the police department, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
An emotion and second discussion. Mrs. Kresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item number five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first change order for work to be performed by Pro Supply Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for the CDVG fiscal year 2018 demolition project number one in the amount of $7,244, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
An emotion and second discussion. Mrs. Kresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted, and that completes our regular items of business. And we turn the meeting over to you, Mr. Webster, for your city manager's report, please.
Thank you, Commissioner President Murray, fellow commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start with the donations. First, a donation of $1,361.94 was received from the VFW for the purchase of six Canon digital cameras and accessories. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So move.
Second.
An emotion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to the VFW.
Thank you. Second, Dave and Dan Waddington donated $100 to the Division of Facilities and Property for a tree or bush to be planted at the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Site within Washington Park. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So move.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
An emotion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to the Waddingtons.
And finally, the Lang Trust of the Sandusky Library has generously donated a second year of sculptures through the Sculpture on Loan Program provided by the Midwest Sculpture Initiative. The eight new selected sculptures in their respective locations are shown later in the manager's report. We'd ask for a motion to accept, and we did get great feedback on the first year of that program. People were very excited to see the sculptures around town.
I move to accept that loan.
Second.
An emotion and second discussion. It's really been a great program. It's served the purpose of public art. We have some people that hate them, and some people love them, but we got a discussion going, and I think that's always a good thing. So unless there are other comments or objections? Hearing no objections, the motion is approved.
Thank you. Moving on to new and old business with administration, there will be a fall in Halloween storefront competition for businesses in the area bound by Hancock, Decatur, and Shoreline, Washington. There will be three opportunities for voting, a witches' choice, which will take place during the witches' walk, a kids' choice, which will take place during the downtown trick-or-treat, and the people's choice, online voting conducted in partnership and by the Sandusky Register. Please contact Mackenzie Spriggs with questions at 419-627-5929. Again, that's Mackenzie Spriggs at 419-627-5929. And this was building on, we got a lot of great feedback on the bicentennial holiday storefront competition, so decided to try it this year with Halloween and to tie it into many of the existing Halloween programs taking place downtown. Moving on to the police department, Detective Adam West has served the city since 1998. He's a top-notch investigator, but more importantly, a person of high character. It is with bittersweet feelings that we are saddened to learn of his departure, but overjoyed for the opportunity that has been presented to him. Detective West has served his last days with the department and the city effective September 13th, but has been afforded an incredible opportunity to join the DEA as a special agent, and I know he's had opportunities to work there locally. We wish Adam and his family much joy and happiness as they embark on their new adventure. I will certainly miss him. I feel like I'm reading chief's words here. I want to maybe turn it over to you. Why don't you go ahead and finish that off? This is the most testimonial of the transcripts that I've read verbatim before. It felt a little uncomfortable, so go ahead.
Chief.
Detective West was a phenomenal investigator, and he's been working narcotics for probably about six years, but DEA for the last four years, and true loss to the department. But when someone succeeds and has the opportunity to go to higher career choices and higher career opportunities, we're very excited for him. So he starts on the 29th, does an 18-week program down in Quantico, Virginia, and then he'll get his duty station, which is going to be down in the Dallas, Texas area. So we're not happy, but we're very excited, you know, for my career. No one's, went to the federal government, and those are prestigious jobs, so it's a tribute to him, but we're going to miss him.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. And again, I think that's a testament to not only Detective West, but to the type of department and the caliber of the training and the people that are being recruited. So we're very grateful for what Chief and his team have accomplished in the police department. And we wanted to let the commission know there's also been a conditional offer of employment that has been given to Zachary Tyson, who's been a reserve officer with the department for a few months. He will complete his remaining testing and then be sworn in at the October 14th commission meeting. Also, Officer Evan E. Step is attending the STEP program, which is an acronym that stands for Supervisor Training and Education Program through the Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police and Law Enforcement Foundation. STEP is designed for frontline supervisors and covers 21 learning modules where supervisory and leadership theory is translated into professional practice. The classes are held for one week a month over a three-month period. For the finance department, just an update that the next scheduled finance committee meeting will take place on Friday, October 25th at 8:00 a.m. Also for Public Works, there are two fall cleanup opportunities available to city residents free of charge. The first is a drive-through drop-up day, or drop-off day, which will take place on Saturday, September 28th, the Shelby Street Boat Launch Overflow Parking Lot at 101 Shelby Street. And the second, residents are welcome to drop off yard waste at Barnes Nursery at 1630 Camp Road in Huron Township on Saturday, October 5th, and Sunday, October 6th. For further details, please contact 419-627-5884. Also, the Thorpe Drive culvert replacement has been completed, and the roadway is open to traffic. And I saw an email to Director Klein, not only for that project, but for another recently completed project, I think might have been Venice Heights Boulevard, saying that those were, you know, two tough jobs, and they thought the service was exemplary, and that while no Public Works project goes without any hiccups or frustration for local residents, they were very impressed with the professionalism of the department and contractors. So I want to commend them for that. Also, we will be releasing an RFQ for the complete redesign and reconstruction of Warren Street between Monroe and Washington Streets. All inquiries may be directed to the engineering offices at 419-627-5829. And if the commission recalls, we've had some public statements on the condition of Warren, and it's probably the worst condition because of the lack of physical improvements to it over many, many years. It almost feels like an unimproved street. And so as we were able to achieve new resources from the state through the gas tax increase, and we're looking at other opportunities for roads, Warren has always been high on our list. It's just also a big project, and so those resources will allow us to begin looking seriously at getting that repaved and refinished as soon as possible. Also, for the planning department, the public is invited to join city staff at the Erie Boulevard Gateway Site at 1321 Cleveland Road on Friday, October 5th, for a pumpkin decorating activity. Pumpkins will be available for residents to decorate and take home as decoration for the fall holiday season. In addition to the pumpkin activity, hot chocolate will be served, and a neighborhood branding sign will be unveiled as part of the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative. Town floor has been working on that, and it's a continuation of us trying to activate parks and neighborhoods throughout the city. I had a chance to attend another event at the New Gateway this past summer, as did many commissioners, and it was really well-attended, and hopefully it's kind of bringing that neighborhood together. And hopefully you'll see more and more of that in more neighborhoods throughout the city through the Neighborhood Initiative. Also, the regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 25th at 4:30 p.m. in the commission chambers. Board of Zoning Appeals will take place Thursday, October 17th at 4:30 p.m. in the commission chambers. The Landmark Commission Meeting will take place on Wednesday, October 16th at 4:30 p.m. in the commission chambers. And the Arts and Culture Commission Meeting, we'll schedule, will take place on Tuesday, October 8th at 5:00 p.m. in the commission chambers. Closing out with recreation, Dragons and Bacon III. The Recreation Department would like to thank Encore Schoppenstein Hospice for their title sponsorship of the third annual Dragons and Bacon's Festival. The event cannot be done without safety services provided by Towboat USA, Sandusky Fire, the U.S. Coast Guard, and Coast Guard Auxiliary, the Erie County Sheriff's Office, and the Sandusky Junior Sailors, Inc., and Sandusky Sailing Club support boats in the bay during the event. We're looking forward to a great 2020, and we'll announce a date in the near future. Also, another update on the downtown trick-or-treat. The Rec Department is partnering with Downtown Businesses, the Farmers Market, and local organizations for the annual downtown trick-or-treat on Saturday, October 26th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. This year's event will include a pumpkin drop with the Sandusky Fire Department and a pumpkin pie eating contest, which I assume will feature members of the police and fire department. I'm just kidding. Any Sandusky business or organizations that are not in the downtown area are welcome to join the event, and can contact the city's Rec Department at 419-627-5886, or email Jason Whirling at jwhirling@ci.sandusky.oh.us for more information. And then finally, the Run Dusky Race Series. There are three laces, three races left in the Run Dusky Race Series, including the Blue Streak Pride 5K on September 28th, the Savior Pumpkins 5K on October 12th, and the Dot the I Block the M Walk Run on November 30th. Links to registration for all three races can be found at the Recreation Department's Facebook page or website at www.cityofsandusky.com/recreation. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webster. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Mr. Webster, are we supplying coffee at Dump Day this year, I hope?
Through the commission president, Commissioner Waddington. We are now, so if we weren't before, we'll look into it.
Last year, last year I hung out for like three hours, dined for a coffee, and they were on their way. I never saw them.
I'd be happy to bring some. I'll talk to Director Klein, because I think, is it Todd again who's organizing that? So Superintendent Gibson is working on that, but we'll, we'll touch base, and we'll make and work really hard, so we'll make sure that we provide some refreshments and snacks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman.
So Brady, I suppose you're gonna want donuts.
Yeah, I was gonna ask for donuts. Mr. Whoopsir, I wonder if you could ask, or if we could have Director Klein provide us with a, just a brief description on an issue that is brought up a couple of times in this chambers, and that is how we are meeting our obligation regarding the EPA and both Shoreline and on the pier. You and I know our contractors have a plan and they're meeting that plan, but I think we need to get it written into the record to deal with this issue head on.
Director Klein.
Yeah. Through you, Mr. President, Commissioner Brady. As with all of our projects, they're all mandated by the state to have stormwater pollution prevention plans and have oversight. These projects are no exception, and the contractor, especially for the Jackson Street Pier, they have so many certified professionals that are looking at this, that have gone through this. And I would even go as far as saying that two weeks ago, we had the EPA on site and we had two different individuals, one from the stormwater division and one from the environmental division. The stormwater person looked at everything that we were doing on the pier and on Shoreline Drive, and the only thing that they came up with on either of those two projects is that there was too much dirt being tracked into the driveline on Shoreline Drive. That's very difficult for a linear project like that, but that's something that they are being told to address on a daily basis. As far as the environmental, they were asked to take samples and, you know, report those samples to the EPA when they were done and they've, when they pump water, again, both projects right now are not pumping water and both contractors are planning on doing that. So, I mean, we've had, they're doing all their daily reports and everything else, or their weekly reports that they're supposed to be doing and inspections and all that work. So it's very thorough and very time consuming, but it's something that they're doing. And EPA said that they were very impressed with the work that was being done out there.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Additional questions or comments for the city manager? Not send any items of old business. I'm just gonna mention, one, it was bittersweet to see that the Cook Building was going to have to come down. It was unfortunate that the building had degraded to that condition over the years, and that's on the State Historic Preservation Office. It's their charge to look over landmark properties. But I think that this has been an important lesson for the city going forward. We have a landmark commission now and we thoroughly are in charge. And I think that it just, I think the only, the only positive takeaway, other than having some owners who are, and this is a really big one, I shouldn't say only, we do have one big positive takeaway, and that is the owners are committed to rebuilding. But the other positive takeaway, I think that we should take, cities, that we need to redouble our efforts to make sure that we look at landmark buildings. Maybe we need legislation, I'm not sure. It seems as though we do have the authority under the existing ordinance, landmark ordinance, to inspect them, whether we need an interior inspection provision or not, I'm not sure. I'll leave that to the staff and the professionals to evaluate whether that's true, but I wouldn't want to lose another building the way we lost this one, so that's just my only thought. Other items of old business? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I've talked to some of the commissioners, maybe not all of them, but I would like to make a motion to have the sunflower be the official flower for the city of Sandusky. The sunflower is the flower of hope, and then I've been down several times at Maria's Field of Hope for childhood cancer. And if you go in there and spend 15 minutes just walking around in there and read the messages or folks praying or pictures of young kids dying, and what really occurred to me in the last couple of weeks, I've been doing some door to door and I'm getting out a little more, all the sunflower plants that are around Sandusky, I think that's neat. I know it's a pollinator plant for bees and butterflies and that, but I think it'd be neat to have that here. Cedar Point took the initial step, you know, to start this, and I'd like to see it just flourish and keep growing. They got eight, I think there's eight acres out there now. So if you get a chance to walk through it, it's really neat. I mean, you will not come out the same. So, I don't, Mr. Brady, you've been there a few times.
Yeah, I think it is, it is true, at the dedication of that eight acres, it was, it was in the remarks by Mayor Jensen from Avon. He said that anyone that visits that site never comes away without being positively affected by it, and that certainly is the case. Our family has done much as Mr. Waddington and his family has. Once you travel through it, you realize the impact the childhood cancer has on so many individuals, and it knows, it knows no bounds. It doesn't, doesn't seek color, doesn't seek religion, doesn't think, seek any ethnicity. It can attack anyone. And I think, I'm more than glad to, more than happy to second your motion for our city to adopt the sunflower. I'm hopeful that that site will remain just as it is today for many years to come. And in regards to that, I think it'd make a wonderful, wonderful statement for our city.
Spin a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Our Clerk Kelly Cresser contacted Tom Spearcrack, and he was excited about the idea. We have a lot of areas, little small parks that we could grow stuff like this and maybe add to like the butterfly gardens, you know, for monarchs and the bees also, because they're gone, almost extinct, a lot of the bees. So I just think it'd be neat to hit, you know, let's be different, let's be, you know, a few chances. I like it.
Mr. Chairman. I think it would be neat, and I don't really, I don't have an opinion about what kind of flower that we as a city choose as a flower. That one would be just fine. I'd be happy to support it. I would like to entertain an amendment to, David and I also talked about this ahead of time, that offer an amendment that we direct the staff to put together a process where we present this to the community for something that we'd like to do. And whatever time, whatever framework they come up with, we at least get some public input and then adopt it if that turns out to be what it is. But adoption of a city flower isn't something that we should just dictate, even though I support this.
There is a.
About input.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to amend the legislation. Comment on the amendment.
It's entirely appropriate, Mr. Chairman, to have feedback from staff and the public. I think the whole idea is pretty good anyways, so I like eating sunflower seeds, so this will just give me more to eat and I'll enjoy this.
Better to look at.
Oh, oh, not to look at, just to look at.
Further discussion on the motion, on the amendment. Mr. Cresser, would you call the role on the amendment, please?
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Further discussion on the motion itself.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Just one. To the community, this, what's been proposed is, is as good as any flower that we should choose, and I would hope we don't end up in a big discussion and long term battle over this. It's a wonderful flower, represents something worthwhile, and it won't hurt us to adopt this. So please send your letters and whatever comments to the manager and support this. I think it's a good idea.
That's a great idea. So it's a nice, tall, proud, bright flower, supports the bees, what more could you want? All right, Mr. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine.
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
That motion is passed. Other items of new business, commissioners? If not, then we will turn to audience participation. Anyone present wishing to address the commission, please give us your name and address, share with us your thoughts. And there's a couple of new faces here, so bear in mind that your comment period is for five minutes.
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, Sandusky. Over this past weekend on social media, there were a couple of City of Sandusky government issues that were highlighted on Facebook. The, one of, the first one was code enforcement. Not going to give the address, but I will give the general vicinity. The 1200 block of Vine Street, there's been a mattress, microwave cabinet, and a broken vacuum in the boulevard for over a month. The gentleman that brought it up couldn't make this evening's meeting because of his work schedule, so I told him I'd be the bad guy and bring it up. The gentleman stated that code enforcement had been by a couple of, at least twice, and his concern is, is that, not necessarily that it's being ignored, but it appears that we might still be in a situation where these types of issues are complaint based and by the resident. And last coffee with commissioners meeting, Mr. Whoopsir brought up the fact that eventually, hopefully soon, we're going to be going to a code enforcement employee zoned based program, and that probably needs to happen as soon as possible. I know that's been talked about for the last three years. I think we've added enough people in code enforcement that it's probably time to go to a zone based program. The other issue, and when I sit down, maybe somebody can, from commission can ask the chief, the police chief, this question. There was a gentleman that was stopped at the corner of Reese and Hancock Street this past weekend and was ticketed for not yielding to a pedestrian that was actually on the sidewalk, not crossing the street, but actually on the sidewalk waiting to cross the street. This gentleman was stopped and ticketed for not yielding the right of way to a pedestrian. Again, I reiterate, the person was not in the crosswalk, they were standing on the sidewalk. So maybe if the chief for the public's benefit can go over what the law really is concerning that issue, we might be able to clear up a whole bunch of misgivings. Thank you.
Mr. Frogger, would you repeat the street address on Vine Street?
It's in the 1200 block.
1200 block, thank you.
It's in the 1200 block, and this material has been out there for a month. I don't know if the individual felt that if they, I mean, usually if people throw stuff out there and it's free, they'll write free on it. So, and one of them is a mattress, and I would not touch a mattress with a 10 foot pole with the bed bug problem we have in the city of Sandusky, so, Erie County, as far as that goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission?
Kathy Ryder from 1704 Mill Street. I was here, well, not here, down the Meg Street. You may recognize me from the Cunningham issues with the attempt to change the zoning from residential to commercial for their orchard and roadside stand and fence and... Somebody on the commission said to them something about a permanent structure being a base for the beginning of their reattempt. And they have put on the property from a junkyard, a mobile home with a broken frame and dead things that have grown for 20 years on the insides of the windows. The floor is hanging out on the back part of the property. There's not a window frame or a door frame that's not hanging. It's, I've gotten hold of code enforcement or code compliance, they've said they've been out. It's going out a month. And it's my view, you know, out my back door. And there's, last weekend, a skunk came out of the floor that's sagging in the back of it. So now wildlife is taking over. On a lighter note, I have a problem with the name of my neighborhood. I don't know how you guys went about picking the names of the areas, but I purchased a home and I've got almost $80,000 invested in it in an attempt to sell it when it's finished. And I live at the railroad tracks on Mill Street. It's not an intersection, it's the railroad tracks. And there's a sign right across from my house that's about to be sited and for sale that says South Side. When I met my husband 30 years ago, I got him off crack. That's a territory. It's not a good name for a neighborhood. And I just want to know, I know that you guys worked hard to get this all worked out. It's not even an intersection. Why does it gotta be at the end of the sidewalk by the railroad tracks out my front door?
Ms. Ryder.
It's it.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. Did you mention, I didn't catch it, the address of the property that you were complaining about? Could you tell me?
The one with the mobile home?
Yes.
It's Putnam Street. And it's, it's the last property before the railroad tracks on the south side of the tracks.
Thank you.
Chairman. Ma'am, could you give your, your address again where you live?
1704 Mill Street.
That's what I thought you said.
I'm the last house on the Mill Street on the south side of the railroad tracks, so that's property directly behind me. And one other thing, living on Mill Street, they have amped up the watch, and I appreciate it because there had been a lot of mattress dumping and things at the railroad, and I had been catching them, but I couldn't catch them. You know, I see them from my property, but by the time you get around there, driving all the way down to Camp Street. But here lately, and yesterday especially, there was a lot of fire calls and things yesterday, and I understand that. But an officer came over the railroad tracks, no, he was headed north and turned around in my driveway, and my husband said, oops, somebody's gonna get a ticket. So I looked, and that officer got well over 60 miles an hour and jetted to Perkins Ave and never turned on a light or siren. It's happening a little too much. And that's it.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Ryder.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Couple of things. Dealing with the naming of people's neighborhoods, if possible, we need to determine something about, to deal with that issue, whether or not, I grew up on the south side, and I'm listening to what she says, and Mill Street at the tracks has never been part of the south side until now. So the process we went through to get this naming that particular area, since she's objected to it, I think we should at least review it. That's with regard to that. And the crosswalk, the particular case the gentleman talked about, if you'd send him a copy of the police report, you know, there's no telling whether or not the information he gave us is accurate or not, but I do think it's somehow or another notifying, telling the public what the law actually, what the interpretation actually is would be nice, whether the police chief does it or not. When are you, when can you expect cars to stop or not? There is some confusion about what the law actually is. With your permission, I'd like him to give us that information, what the law actually is.
Fair, Chief. What is the, what is a motorist's responsibility when there is someone that's approaching the crosswalk? I'm not really ever sure myself where the line is.
After you, Mr. Murray, Commissioner Poole. I wasn't too sure either until I looked it up, but so, because there's signs up in a lot of different places in town, I think Hayes Avenue by the old Providence is one of them, and it appears that you're supposed to stop or yield to pedestrians that are standing there, and that's not the law. The law is that if the pedestrian is in the crosswalk, the motorist has to yield to them, but pedestrian can't just walk out into the crosswalk and expect to pass freely. So it's kind of a timing issue. We have some of that at the hospital on Tyler Street as well. And so basically, the law is if you, if the pedestrian's in the crosswalk and, you know, vehicles coming, they have the right of way, but they can't just walk out into the crosswalk to have the vehicle stop. And that's a kind of a danger, would be a dangerous situation, but that's how the law is written.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm a geek, so I'd already read the law. Exactly. You take your life in your own hands, and I recognize it's, pedestrians are afraid to step off the curb. At the same time, cars don't have to stop unless you do. So you need to assert your rights, as you do with all rights in America, they're demand. You have to step off the curb and just make sure you do it when some, when the car is far enough away to see you and stop. Getting run over because you had the right of way is probably not a good idea, so use some good common sense.
And to clarify, Chief, that law applies to every crosswalk, whether they're hatched or not.
That's correct.
It seems to be a common misperception in some places that it's only the hatched ones, but it's all crosswalks.
All crosswalks, yes.
Mr. Chair.
It's Lockhart.
To the chief, how do you determine if someone is not yielding to a pedestrian other than averting, you know, someone walking in there? Is there?
I guess it would just be witnesses that would see the event. Hopefully, we don't have an event like that because it would probably be bad, but we would, you know, a pedestrian's gonna say they were in the crosswalk and a vehicle's gonna say they weren't, and if we don't have any independent, it'll be a tough situation to sort out.
Anyone else?
Unless there's cameras, there's a lot of cameras around, so.
Okay. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission?
Mr. Brady's comments at the last meeting about Jackson Street Pier were interesting, but you still don't get it. This commission, this city manager, and this newspaper insist that every time someone comes up here and comments about what the city's doing, it's all a few people that are aggravating it and causing these problems. The Jackson Street Pier State Theater meetings were packed with people, but they were picture boards of what was going on and happening in other cities. You like this, you like this, you like this, well, you better because it's gonna happen here. Mr. Pesta had a meeting with us at the Boomtown. They had a table set up with eight chairs. By the time Mr. Pesta made his presentation, that room was packed, and there were people sitting on the stairs. And when he, with a smile on his face, said, would you like to see a market building on Jackson Street Pier, the resounding no could be heard. on Jackson Street Pier, the resounding "no" could be heard in the rest of the restaurant. He was shocked. He had a look on his face like somebody kicked him. And when he got the same answer when he brought up making Shoreline Drive one-way. But you're easing the city into that, because they've been one-way for a while, they'll get used to that. Mr. Webster had a meeting with us, and he showed up and brought his papers to spread out on the table and show it to us. And there were too many people in the room. He didn't expect to see that many people at that room, so he had to make his presentation standing up. And somebody brought up, what are you going to do about the geese? And he stated that you hadn't figured it out yet, you're coming up with different ideas, and the word "poison" came out, and he made a lot of people mad. Whether you like them or not, they're protected creature, you can't poison them. And Mr. Pesta stated at the city commission meeting that, let me make this perfectly clear, this is not a concert venue. But you could put 1,500 people in there, and it rises up four and a half feet in the back so that you can see the 40-by-40-foot stage. You get 1,500 people in there, they're not throwing frisbees, and they're not going to be flying kites. It's a concert venue, but you refuse to say it out loud because you know what that's going to cause. The stakeholders came and they said it was beautiful, it was wonderful, it was magical. Here's a $50,000 check. Maybe if we would have had more $50,000 checks on this side of the table, we would have got a little more influence. But you went ahead and voted for a vague plan that had no dimensions and no budget, and at that meeting, almost 100 people stood up and walked out of that meeting. Since they're not here, you act like they don't matter anymore. So every time somebody brings it up, you blame it, and especially the newspaper loves to blame it on a few people as the scapegoats. They're the pot stirrers, they're the ones that are always making comments. And the one thing that was mentioned at every single meeting, from the first state meeting onto the last one, don't block the view of the lake from the road. Everyone said it, whether they wanted parking or not, whether they wanted a fairground or not. That's what they stated, and you've done it already. Mr. Murray, you've been on that seat more than a year or so, and you've heard it for years and years and years about people wanting their streets done, sidewalks done, trees done, whatever. And that question, the answer has always been, we don't have the money. Now you have money, and the people are still seeing that this money's going into a quarter-mile road and a pier, and they know they're not going to get their street fixed for 10 years. The ones that got their streets fixed are happy, but the ones that haven't, they're still mad, and they're madder every day. You can't blame your scapegoats from this. You guys created that situation. And now you're trying to blame the problem with parking and getting into the stores with a three-hour car show once a month. The car show is fine, the parking for the ferries is the problem. Mr. Webster said they would park in the parking garage, and they didn't. So they have to be corrected on that. Car show's fine, car show's not the problem. They have a few people here standing up for them. Do you want all of them here? Do we have to bring 100 people for Jackson Street Pier in every meeting? I don't think so. They, they don't, I don't think they need to be here to be represented. The people that are here representing what their concerns are, state what their concerns are. And it's been brought up over and over again. Are they working Plan One, Plan Two, Plan Three? I have, after you voted for this vague plan, I got a copy of the plan, and it shows in the schematics that there's 10 festival hookups on the pier, five of them at the north end. That wasn't voted on, that was never brought up in any of the meetings for two years. Don't know where that came from. Is that Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C? Because that wasn't on Plan A. So yes, people, not just a couple of people, people want to know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission?
I don't have my, watch my time.
I got you.
We're getting to know each other. I have to commend you. I didn't sit in the back of the room this week to test you. I sat in the middle, but I could hear you. Now, my husband has hearing aids, but they're not working so good, and he had to ask me a few times, but it's much better when those things are working. I don't know who turned volume up, but thank you. Couple things. Lyons Park, I have tons of questions, so get ready, asks Sandusky, who's ever in, who's in charge of that? Who answers? Oh, I can't answer. I'll ask them. Thanks, Josh. I know what I'm doing. Okay. So the Lyons Park, we're going to throw $74,000 more at it. All those eyes go up. What, I guess what, what we need to make sure of this time is that this is a total fix for that particular problem. Because we're not always going to have $74,000 to throw at it. Warren Street, we were, you were talking about Warren Street tonight. It's a terrible street, but so are the others in town that deserve just as much attention. And I can see Warren Street becoming, let's see, they'll come off Cedar Point Causeway, they'll come down, go around Sycamore, past Sycamore, down Warren Street and go straight downtown. That new pathway that you're going to make down there is going to be really nice for all the people who leave Cedar Point and want to go to the bustling downtown, all the activity. I don't think so. Okay? I hope you're right, but I don't think so. I think that's money badly, poorly spent. The other thing, really, I'm not going to ask you a question, but I'm going to give you a suggestion. Those of you who are running for reelection or election, people at home sit and listen to this, and they think, there's that crazy woman again. It's okay. I admire that title, because I care about this city. The explanation of passing the things under emergency, Section 13, Section 14, people are sitting home watching this video, and they have no idea what that is. I suggest that somebody give them what, passing it under emergency and passing it under 13 and Section 14. I suggest somebody put that somewhere where they can read it, accessible to everybody, not just people with a computer, because it's very confusing. And I can remember, you know, what the heck? It's, it's emergency. What section? Section eight. You talk about Section eight, Section 13, Section 14, and emergency. Give the people of this city some knowledge, here, I want to be a teacher again, but give them some knowledge that they can use when they're listening to these comments and what you're doing. I remember asking you at one time, when do you all talk? Well, I copied the entire agenda this morning, and I went through it. I've got notes and more questions than you can imagine. And I like to think that Bowling Green told me I was educated and I can understand, I have good comprehension, but there are things I don't understand, like 217 or $211,000 for renting five buses from the transit. $211,000 a year, $17,000 a month. Wow, we could buy our own vehicles and, and give jobs to people. Just a suggestion, but Section eight, Section 13, Section 14, and passing something under emergency, because at home, they're not seeing any emergency, they're just seeing you all smile at each other and say yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission? If not, then I will undertake a motion to adjourn.
Let's move.
Let's move.
We stand adjourned.